Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 5:00. Mrs. Weber, will you please take role to establish a quorum? Clerk Hills? Member Kelly?
Here.
President Perry?
Here.
Member Morgan? And Member Malchesky will be here shortly. Okay. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for Mrs. Weber, are there any changes to the agenda? There are not. Thank you. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
No, moved.
Sure. Any discussion?
Second motion.
Sherry. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion pa... all in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Oh, no. You're right. Agenda is adopted. Okay. Our task tonight is to interview and select an executive search firm for the new superintendent. Clerk Hills, are there any public comments regarding the interview and selection process? Clerk Hills? Are there any comments from the public?
Not that I know of. I have not received any.
Okay. Okay. Tonight, we have two firms to interview. Education Leadership Services and Leadership Associates. I'm going to choose one out of Victoria's pocket to go first. Ooh-hoo. Okay. Leadership Associates will go first. Each firm will have 20 minutes to present, plus questions from members of the board that will follow each presentation. At the conclusion of the presentations and questions, it is the intention of the board to select a firm this evening. I welcome Leadership Associates.
Well, thank you very much for this opportunity to present our interest in working with you, partnering with the board in your search for your new superintendent. We know that selecting a superintendent is probably one of your most important jobs, if not the most important job that you have, and therefore, we also feel that it's significantly important to select the search firm that can help you do that best. We have... we have, as you know, we know each other, so this is not about... we don't, you know, we think they're terrible. We like them. They're good people. So, but we know that our responsibility, your responsibility in doing this is to really be sure you have a search firm that can help you make that work the best for you. We know that in the last few months, with change of leadership, with change of board, there are certainly changes that are going on. Sometimes that leaves people with a little angst in what's going to happen next and concern, and so we want to ensure that you get the right superintendent to help you go forward in this, as you're doing your work. We want to demonstrate tonight particularly what distinguishes us from other search firms. We are a search firm that's been in existence since 1996. We're going to each introduce ourselves and tell you a little bit about it, and I'm gonna... I'm really not great with these things. There we are. Oh, never mind. So, we're talking a little bit as we come to that. We'll talk a little bit about ourselves, and again, it's really to talk about how we can help you as a district to move forward. So, let me... a little background for Peggy Lynch. I was a superintendent of San Diego Union High School District for almost seven years. Prior to that, I spent seven years as a superintendent in Brao-Linda Unified here in Orange County, and prior to that, I spent 24 years in Tustin Unified School District. I was started as a middle school teacher, a high school teacher, high school assistant, principal, and assistant superintendent in that time in Tustin. Mark, you want to talk a little back?
Sure. Thank you again for the invite. My name is Mark Ecker. I was superintendent of schools in the Fountain Valley School District for 18 and 1/2 years. I retired 10 years ago, and for the last 10 years, I've been a partner with Peggy and about 14 other partners, working with boards, trying to help them find superintendents, as well as doing some leadership development with the board and with executive leaders. I also teach at Cal State University Fullerton in their Educational Leadership Department within the College of Ed, and I told Bill Cheney, who is the CEO of Schools First Federal Credit Union, to make sure you know that I'm the chair of the Schools First Federal Credit Union Board. That's the only reason I brought it up.
So, we want to talk a little bit about some of the things that do... in addition, I also do executive leadership work. I work with superintendents in different areas of the state, and so I'm also doing... I just finished an Assistant Aspiring Superintendent Series with four, for four sessions. So, that's what I do. So, this, I think, is one of our specifically distinguishing periods, and that is, these three, these four people are our executive assistants. So, Linda Harder, Penny Pyle, Serena Farrington, and Betty Hall, all are, work with us to do the work we do. They have all the backup materials that Victoria will need to do her work, all kinds of samples, those materials that will help her do the process. I don't think she's done one for a while, so it takes... there's a lot of detail work that also sometimes falls on them, but we have a lot of materials to help support them. Linda, Penny, and Serena are all former executive assistants for superintendents. They have gone through our searches when they were the executive assistants, so they really understand what her role will need to be, and of course, have supported boards and superintendent in their work as well. That's a really important piece because, again, it does, there's a fair amount of detail and follow-up that has to occur throughout the search process, and we'll talk further about the process itself. Mark, do you want to add anything to that one? You're okay?
No. It just, Vicki is a very experienced executive assistant, but as Peggy said, laws change, things change, and when new searches come up, they can be invaluable.
Great. Thank you. All right. So, this is a little bit about our purpose and who we are. We're a partnership of active California educators, education leaders. We're committed to excellence. We're committed to... when it was founded, the three or four people who were involved were really significantly committed that every school district deserves a great leader. Every kid deserves a great leader. Every school district deserves a great leader, and that's where we were founded on. And we are partners, and as Mark mentioned, there's actually 20 of us now who are partners. So, when we do work, we have other partners who assist us while Mark and I would be doing the search. We have other partners who help us identify candidates, help us know who candidates are that might have baggage that you don't want to deal with, those kinds of things. These are things we believe. High-quality public education is a foundation of democracy. That's important to us, and that's part of our premise. Quality of leadership has a huge impact on the success of staff and students, and that every student, as I said, deserves a passionate, caring leader, and that's what we're looking to do. We value integrity, equity, excellence, diversity, inclusion, accountability, and transparency. Those are all characteristics that we try to work hard on in our firm. Supporting our clients, school boards and other education. We conduct highly professional executive searches tailored to individual client needs. Districts are different. They have different needs, and they're different places in what they're looking for at that time, and so that's what we work with. We have, provide challenging and engaging professional growth opportunities for superintendents, boards, and other education leaders. I, for example, do a superintendent's network in the Central Coast, and I work with nine superintendents from Santa Barbara up to San Luis Obispo, and I meet with them six times a year, and we do professional development for those leaders as well. So, and then by remaining engaged with boards, superintendent leaders, we support... we are engaged with what we do. We're engaged with the boards we work with. We're engaged with the superintendents we work with. If, you know, if somebody calls me, and I've just done their search, and the superintendent calls me and says, "Hey, I need help," we help. That's, that's part of what we do. So, that's a little bit about our clients. This is a little bit about our statewide reach. I think this is going to be you, Mark, so I'm letting you do this one.
Another distinguishing difference that we bring to the table is, if we were selected to do the search, you don't only get Peggy and me. You would get a series of 20 partners. We meet every other week via Zoom, talking to each other what searches we've done, share ideas, help each other grow, and we do this on Zoom every other week. We also, we also meet twice a year in our own advance, where we train ourselves, we go over new ideas, we meet during the superintendent symposium, and we meet again during the summer. So, we're not hired guns, so to speak. We are owners of this company. We're not just consultants. Each of us have a stake in Leadership Associates, and each and every search is very, very important. So, if you hire us, you hire all of those as well.
I mean, one of our advantages, I think, is that, for example, I've done about 90 or so searches, so it's been a lot. Probably means I'm old, but it's okay. But I've done a lot of searches, and up here, we've done, these are some of the people we've done, you can go ahead and do that one. Over 700, Tustin, Newport Mesa, Fountain Valley, Orange Unified, Saddleback, Fullerton Joint and Brao-Linda are just some of the ones that you would know more about. I've done, I've done Santa Monica, Malibu three times. I've done Palo Alto a couple of times. So, we've kind of range all over the state with the work we do. Mark?
And just, just the only addition, and Peggy has done more than me. I've done well over 100 searches in the 10 years that I've been working as a partner in leadership. Peggy has been a partner longer than me. She's done more searches. Not only do you see the 700-plus searches that the organization has done, but we concentrate in areas, and we would invite you to talk to any of our references, to talk to those who know us the best, and get a real feel for the kind of personal service that we can provide.
You're next.
Okay. A number of points to, you know, to mention to you, but I wanted to, you know, I wanted to hone in on the fact that our partnership is a diverse partnership. It is a partnership that has taken great pride in, over the past three years. Over 66% of our placements have been, or finalists have been, women or candidates of color that we've brought to the table. So, for those school boards that are looking for diversity, it's something that we've taken a great deal of pride in. The diversity and equity statement that we believe in is written into our bylaws. It is also, you know, a part and parcel of our partnership. Go on our website, take a look at our mug shots, and you'll be able to see sort of a flavor of the variety of different individuals that we try to bring to the table.
You're up next.
The success, we believe, of searches has to do with developing a rich pool, and a rich pool of candidates, to a great extent, comes about as a result of relationships. Our relationships are strong. We've listed a number of organizations up there. One or more of our partners are all a part of those organizations. CASA and CALSA, we have people that have been in their executive boards, but rich pools come about, to a great extent, with the people you know and the organizations that you've been a part of. As a result, we've been able, on our searches, to bring tremendous amount of talent for the boards to consider.
And we are now a CSBA affiliate. We became a CSBA affiliate this year, and they're, we support it. So, we were, for example, at their, the conference at CSBA to work with them as well, so... Mark, you want to do the search?
This is a slide, and the reason we sort of jumped to distinguishing differences, this is a slide that most search firms are going to go through. The process is pretty similar. We start with the board, and we end with the board. We start with you. We find out what you particularly are looking for. We then do a deep dive into our stakeholder interests. We talk to parents, teachers, administrators, community members, really, any group that the board would like us to reach out to. We then begin a recruitment of the candidates that we're looking, that match our position statement. Based on the input and our online surveys, we will put together a position statement, and we will pass it through you for your approval. Once we have that, it's published on your website as well as ours, and we begin recruiting candidates that meet that position statement. And then finally, we bring all of the applicants and the applications to you. You have an opportunity to see them all. Not only our recommendations, and to help you out, we tier them, but you'll have an opportunity to see them all. So, it starts with the board, ends with the board, a process to a great extent that is practiced by many other firms.
You're next.
Probably the fourth or fifth distinguishing difference between Leadership Associates and other firms is the fact that we don't simply recruit, see that you select a candidate, and leave. We believe in continuous improvement. We are believers in being better tomorrow than you are today, and we know that being a superintendent is a tough job. We also know that trustees, being a trustee is a tough job, and we have developed an executive leadership development series that is vibrant. We have networks. Peggy actually leads a couple of networks in the state for superintendents. We do board governance work, and we actually have an extremely successful conference, an institute, every June, for our superintendents in San Diego. We also have a subscriber list. I'd invite you to go on the website, take a look at the opportunity to become a subscriber, but when we receive the job, once that job is ours, it goes on and is emailed blast to about 1,200-plus subscribers almost immediately. So, the following that we have, our conferences in San Diego draw 200 or 300 superintendents, and again, committed to ongoing development.
So, just some closing thoughts. It's your search. It's personalized. We want to make sure you feel great about what we're doing and the work we're doing, so we spend a lot of time with communication on that. It's broad-based. We have a lot of technology. Our online surveys are in different languages, so that's available. We're competitive. We think reasonable, all-inclusive cost. You don't pay extra for, if we have to stay overnight in a hotel or travel, and I live in San Clemente, so traveling's not too hard for me. Highly qualified administrative office team that we mentioned. Serena Farrington actually is full-time for us. The others do searches for us, and then Betty Hall works with our ELD work, our Executive Leadership Development work as well. Again, as Mark mentioned, 66% of our individuals selected were with, were women or people of color. We're an experienced California firm with a strong statewide and national reach. We don't, people come on our website from all over the country to check out what's available, so it isn't just that we do searches just in California. And I think the other part is, you know, pretty passionate and pretty committed to this work. Some people have said, "You know, aren't you going to retire?" And I'm like, "Well, why would I do that? I'm enjoying what I do, and I love that we get a chance to give back to public education. It gave me a great education." And with a 37-year-plus career in it, I, I think it's important to help new administrators and young administrators and administrators and boards be successful in the work. Because honestly, for me, kids are pretty important, and when, if we're not paying attention to what they need and really taking care of them the best we can in school districts, we're going to have a lot more problems than we need. So, that's kind of my last pitch. So, that's, we'll let you ask questions.
Okay. Thank you. Board members, do we have some questions? Who'd like to start? Okay. Dr. Malchesky?
Hi. Thank you. I enjoyed going through these materials and hearing your presentation. So, I'm just gonna start out with probably the less general and, you know, feel-good comments and go right to like where we are in this moment, because I think that that's an important thing for us to tackle. So, the first question I have is, Peggy, would you be the person assigned to this?
Yes.
Both of you?
The two of us.
Okay. And anyone else?
No. Specific assignments would be us, and then I think we have Linda Harder will be doing the search.
Yeah.
As a three-person team, in terms of the two people most immediately are Mark and myself. And then the executive assistant, who would work directly with us and with Victoria.
Yeah.
Great. So, I'm asking this of everybody because we have some very active parent groups and some board difficulty as we sort of find our footing and begin working together.
Sure.
So, the first question is whether or not you have had a relationship, professional or personal, with anyone on the board or continue to, and if you've been speaking with anybody on the board about this so far?
No, I have not, no.
Okay. Great. Can you maybe talk about another search that you have had to run where there's been some, you know, kind of difficult transition issues with the board, and what are, what do you think some best practices are for figuring out how to deal with that?
Well, yes. Unfortunately, yes. But it's, it's okay. It is what happens. I've done some searches where longtime board stayed in place for a long time, highly successful, lovely board to work with. I did some governance work with them. I've done their superintendent's evaluation. Big board change, two new people come on with a very different perspective, and I worked with that board too, because one of the things that you need to do, I mean, it's... so I'm a sports fan, so when you get a new player on the team, you've got to figure out how it's going to work. You know, you've got to figure out how you're going to play the game with the new person in the team. Their strengths might be different than yours. Your values might, hopefully, your values aren't different. I always like to think, maybe I'm Pollyanna-ish about this, I always like that everybody's coming here for kids, that you really want this to be a great school district for your kids and your families. You want them to feel proud of what happens here. So, for me, when I work with people who are kind of struggling with that, is to begin to really think about finding common ground. What are the things you can agree on? What are the things, and if you don't agree on some things, how are you going to handle those disagreements? Right? Are you going to fight in a board meeting? That's happened in some districts where there's been a physical altercation. I would assume you'll never do that. I'd like to assume you'll never do that, but that's, but we've had those kinds of things where a board member literally turns their chair and won't talk to the rest of the board. Well, we're all adults, and let's figure out how to make this work. So, that's what we try to really work around is, so there are differences. People come with different perspectives, but what are the common ground? What are the things that are common ground? What are the things that are common in our goals, our values, that we want to uphold? And then how do we make that work operationally when we're in board meetings, when we're working with staff, those kinds of things? For me, if I were in your position and I was about to hire a new superintendent, I'd have a governance workshop as soon as I possibly could, and I would sit down and talk about how are we going to operate? What do you need in information? What do you need? How do you like to communicate? You know, what am I, I've got to be able to trust you as a superintendent? I was a superintendent for 14 years. I need to be able to trust my board members to have my back, and I was going to have theirs. So, that's what we really work on. So, that's to be the first thing I would do. And really reexamine, because I've got your goals, your mission, and values, and I've read them, and I, I would be wanting to say, "Are we still there? And if we are, what does that look like for the next three, five years? I'm assuming you don't want a superintendent, most districts don't, who's only going to stay two years and walk out the door." But they stay two or, they stay five or more years because of this.
Because of you.
Because of you.
Well, fortunately, we have a governance workshop coming up, and my last question, because I want to turn it over, is, given some of the board transition issues, how would we ensure that information is fully shared and not going to some board members and other? How do we work the process so that we have full information?
During the process?
And we're, how do you promote us working unity?
So, first, let me start, as you think about the process, when we're doing like input sessions, like our first board meeting with you would be about what, what do you want? What are the strengths? What are the experiences, qualifications that you want in the new superintendent? What are the strengths of the district? What are the challenges for the district? And we take all of that, we put that in, then we go listen to all your community. For those of you who know high schools a little bit, you know what a WASC accreditation process is like? This is a little bit like a WASC accreditation process. You're going to hear, you're going to get a lot of information about what the community, what your staff, what your parents are thinking about where you are as a school district. So, you're going to get all the input you gave us, all the input everybody else gave us, and all of the online survey results. You're going to, it's voluminous, I will tell you that. It's not like light reading, but it's pretty hefty, and it's important. And I think from that, we write that position description, and we then target candidates that we think can help address those things. Now, anybody can apply for the job, but we also want to find candidates who really match where you are and who have some experience in dealing with trying to transition to new roles. I mean, that's, that's a big deal.
There are actually two documents that come out of all of that data. One Peggy alluded to, which is a position description, that you'll have a chance to see before it's published. The second is an executive summary that gives you a little bit of a deep dive. The position description is public. You want everyone to see that. You want candidates to see that. The executive summary is really yours. It's up to you what you want to do with it, but it basically gives you the down, deep, and sometimes difficult things to hear out in the community. That's what you'll get, is all, you know, get also. So, those are the two documents that come out of the data.
Is there another board member who has a question?
Thank you so much for your presentation. Thank you for being here. I'm very optimistic that this is going to be a very healthy process and a very engaging process. I'm, I have a series of questions, so I'm going to start with a couple and then see if that prompts some more input from my fellow board members, and then I can come back. What is your process for, well, let me, let me start over. How, is there a different way of which you would approach a district such as ours that it's a basic aid district versus another? I know there's not as many basic aid districts, and so that might, how does that change the qualifications that we might be looking for? Because it has a different, because our funding profile is different, we have different voices as well that are assertive groups within the community that have a stake, really. It's a different stake depending on if they're actively in their schools or not, but it is relevant. So, I'm just curious as to how you gather that information, is that when you're sharing it, well, that's a different question I was going to ask, how you, and then with that also, how do you, and how will you engage the different groups within the community? The teachers and staff being very important, are they separate, or do you talk to them together? The parent groups, because as you indicated, the elementary schools are just warm and yummy and loving, and high schools are completely different. And because we're so small, we have a very, it's a very small microscope where the high school is one high school, and so if you're not there yet, you don't know what you don't know until you get there, and you might not even know it until you're done. So, it's not a huge pool of people. It's, you know, it's a small point in time on the timeline for our, our parents, and then you have all these families that have gone through it. So, we have a lot of different but focused groups that are interested in this process.
Sherry, let me take the first question first. The deal about a basic aid or a community-funded district. As a former CBO, I know them well, and Peggy and I have done a tremendous amount of work with basic aid or community-funded districts. There's a little over 1,000 school districts in California. There's under 100 that are community-funded, so probably around 10% or less are community-funded. You know it's driven by property value assessments. The big difference, to a great extent, is that LCFF districts, which are the majority of them, receive their money by the number of your enrollment, but even more so the attendance. If an annual attendance goes down... If a annual attendance goes down, your funding goes down. Community-funded districts are driven by parcels. So that means you get your money from parcels. Very different. There's some protections there, but there's also some, you know, things you've got to look out for. When we begin looking at candidates, clearly we're going to be looking at individuals who have either been in a community-funded district, have been possibly a superintendent in one, or most certainly are familiar with the funding element of a community-funded district. So remember, most districts have CBOs. CBOs sort of carry the gauntlets when it comes to determining where they are on an annual basis in terms of, in terms of property assessed valuation. But it's important that a superintendent understands that concept too. So the people that you would see us recruiting would be individuals that have an experience or certainly knowledge of community-funded districts. Did you want to say?
Just one comment. I don't, it's interesting question about skills. I'm not sure it takes different skills. It takes different knowledge base maybe, but skill level, it's still going to take somebody who's an inspiring leader, who can, you know, a good communicator, you know, they're, when you do the input sessions and all the inputs, and we do them with Zoom, we do them with in-person, all those kinds of things, we have a whole thing we do with all that. But the skill set isn't necessarily different. It's maybe some of the knowledge base, but it, I think most superintendents or people who are, if they're going to study this, I mean, one of the advanced, one of the things that candidates need to do is study. They're going to watch your board meetings, they're going to watch, they're going to read what you're doing, they're going to know all about those kinds of things, they're going to do their homework. So I think that this, I'm not sure the skill set necessarily changes so much as sometimes the knowledge or understanding of that, whether they've experienced themselves or not.
I mean, it's not going to take the place of someone who is a courageous, visible leader. You're going to want a leader. And you're going to need a leader on either one of those fronts. But I think as Peggy's point is, you want someone also that understands there is a difference and, you know, is going to proceed in that manner. Sherri, the second question I think you had related to our groups, the stakeholder groups. The stakeholder groups is something, and this is where Linda Harder, the third member of our team, will be working with Victoria. And she's going to help her put together the groups that you want. If we're selected at our initial meeting, one of the questions we're going to ask you is, who do you want input from? Clearly, there are some that go from district to district to district. You want your teachers, you want your classified staff, you want your parents, you want key community members, you want your site administrators, you want your leadership team. You want parents that are parent leaders in the district. Maybe they've served on school site councils, maybe they're in the PTA, maybe they're your foundation leaders. You're going to want them to have a say. There could be others. Some boards want state-based groups to have a stake in this. So whatever you decide, those groups meet separately. We offer opportunities for them to meet personally with us as well as virtually. So we can set up Zoom sessions. More and more people are finding, especially on inclement days or, you know, with the way things are today, many people are doing things via computer, via, you know, Zoom. We also have a meeting that is, we sort of call it a town hall meeting, and anyone is able to come to this meeting. And then we have, as Peggy pointed out, the survey, the vibrant survey that is, usually runs for about a week. We don't want it to go forever because we want people to respond to it. It's done in whatever languages you'd like, and that's the data we collect. Those groups, and I did want to make one point that I think is important, it's important that we get honest feedback from them. Many board members ask us, should we, can we go to those meetings? Well, we're not going to tell you, you can't go. You know, you're, you're a citizen of Laguna Beach, you are certainly a taxpayer, and you could very well be a parent. You're going to have your opportunity to give input. But what we want is, we don't want people intimidated, we don't want people afraid to be honest. We want to get individuals to share their honest feedback. And so we tell them that we're going to report to you the groups by groups, but we're not going to say, you know, Mrs. Brown said this, or Mr. Green said this. We're going to give you the reports by group. And with that, we've gotten more and more people that are willing to come out and be honest and share. The data we collect though is, we try to glean trends and threads and commonalities. You may have someone who's way off on this side saying something that no one else said. We're looking for those that are common among all those groups. Anything you wanted to add?
That help?
It does. I was going to ask a follow-up. If you have a comment that's kind of way off to the side, but you actually find it to be an interesting perspective and relevant, will you include it and kind of flag it?
It would be included.
It would be included.
Yes.
Would you flag it as something like, this is actually an interesting question that might be worth considering?
I think we usually try to point out there's something really different from what we've heard, but you'll get a chance to read all of them. But we usually find, there's, there's not, that doesn't happen quite as often as we think it's going to, but it's still important to notice and we would highlight that. And you'll see that in executive summary.
Right. And we will give you, and we'll give Victoria, our contact information. There are people, even in a small group, aren't comfortable sharing some information they feel is relevant. And if they'd like to reach out to Peggy or me, an email or a call, you're invited to do that.
And often in districts, there's city people that you want us to talk to. Because sometimes there's relationships with the city mayor, the city manager, the mayor, whatever it might be. So whatever those kinds of things work out, it depends on districts. You know, sometimes there's a very active Rotary Club, and that's like a big deal, and the Rotary Club wants to be included. We often invite service clubs all together because they have sort of similar interests and we can have them all together and then we're not having all those separate meetings. But most of them are finding that the, the online survey and the Zoom things have really helped increase some participation?
Yeah.
Anything else?
Did we answer your question?
Yeah, no, you did very much. Thank you so much. I'll defer to my colleagues for now. I might come back.
Okay. Clerk Hills, do you have any questions? Okay. Member Kelly asked to go last, so I'll just ask a couple. What, what small districts have you done searches for that might be similar to ours?
Well, Los Lomitas up north is.
Los Lomitas in Menlo Park, just about the same size as yours, maybe a little smaller, in the, sort of in the shadow of Stanford University, relatively small district. We've done districts like Cypress, which is small. Brayland is not that much bigger than yours. It's not a community-funded district, but it does have one high school. It's a single high school district, you know, a unified district, about the same size.
It's a little bigger than here, but yeah.
A little bit bigger, but not much, you know, in terms of that. The majority of the districts up and down the state are about your size or smaller. I mean, it's surprising because we always think of San Francisco and Los Angeles and districts like that. The average district in the state is well under 1,000 students.
I did one in, I just blanked the name, but in Fallbrook Elementary is pretty tiny. Pretty tiny district. It was interesting when you, somebody was asking earlier about, you know, a one high school district. So I was superintendent in Braya where there was a one high school district. It's like the shining place on the hill kind of thing, you know, everybody knows about. If you don't show up to the girls' basketball games in Brayland, you're in trouble because it was a big deal, you know? And if you're, if you're not at the football game on Friday night, they know you're not there when you're superintendent, those kind of districts. Santa Gita, where I had four high schools, they didn't know where I was on Friday nights because there were four high school games going on all at the same time, you know? And you just kind of do, but so very different on the kind of community, but, but yeah, we've done a lot of different kinds of searches. I actually did Los Lomitas a long time ago, and he's back there doing it now.
You want it again. And also, very similar to this general area, recent, a lot of searches in Marin County. So Marin County is a little bit unique in the sense, they are all Southern Marin community-funded districts, but they do feed one union high school district, Tamalpais, which is a high school district, but again, the feeders and the high school are all.
And you've done some, you've done those.
I've done them all.
And you've done Tam, and you're doing Tamalpais now.
Tamalpais now.
Also, when you're getting together different groups, whether it be a staff group, a parent group, a community group, have you done student groups?
Yes, absolutely. You have student board members?
Yes.
And, and actually, it's, I love doing the student groups. I was the ASB advisor at Houston High School before I was the high school principal there. And I love the student groups and frankly, they're, they're very honest about what they think and what they observe. And they have good experience from what they've been through in your system, what's worked for them, right?
We would really like to have their input also.
Absolutely, absolutely.
The kindergarten group you had didn't work out.
Yeah, kindergarten group wasn't, they, they don't know what superintendents are, so. My elementary students in Braya honestly used to call me Super Nintendo, which I was happy with, I was okay with that term. But they really don't have an idea what superintendents do. You know, some middle schools do. I've worked with a district in LA County that middle school students came together. They were great. They had some incredible ideas about the schools. So we try, we do, student input's very important. They can do the survey, but it's, it's kind of fun to have them talk to you directly about.
Right, and hear each other's ideas.
And hear each other.
Especially leadership groups that know a little bit more, you know, you do, when I was doing Mill Valley, the students weren't quite sure what a superintendent is or what. So, you know, we had to work through that.
I used to tell them I was the boss of the principals.
Thank you very much. Okay, Dr. Kelly?
Thank you for coming this evening. I was very impressed that you're partners and owners. I think that's a real strength. I like the experience that you bring to the table. And I like that you're going to develop some reports to us at the end, besides the superintendent. The reports may be even more important than the superintendent you provide us with. And I also like your insurance policy regarding if the superintendent leaves within the first two years, what we get. I've been doing searches longer than you, I'm sorry to say, that I've been 40 years in higher education. And so I've done hundreds of searches.
I've read about your bio.
Yes, thank you very much. And what you, you talked about the college next, you know, in Menlo Park, well, the most important college there is Menlo College, not Stanford, where I was the president of Menlo College. So I kind of, you know, you're losing some points from me as far as with not understanding, you know, what's going on up there. Dr. Macheski really has the main points that I was interested in, but I've developed some new ones since we've gone along. I wondered if you had a chance to watch any of our last three board meetings?
I have not.
Okay.
No.
Okay, then you can't answer the question I was going to ask. Do you have a stable?
No.
Okay.
No. We've been accused of that in the past, but no, we do not.
Okay, because I got a little concerned when you talked about sending out the, the listings to your, your online grouping.
But anybody can be on that.
Well, I understand that. But some search firms develop people that they have worked with over time and have them tucked away some, someplace.
No, not at all.
Okay.
That's a good question because as Peggy said, when you're successful and you've placed a lot of superintendents, we get asked more often than once or twice about, do we just have a group that we service? Candidates that we service answer clearly is no.
My next question is, what is the success rate of your searches overall?
Was it about 80? I think it's about 85% that have stayed five years or more. I don't have it right in front of me, but I think it might even be, it's in one of the things in the packet, it's in the, yeah.
It's in the packet of the children.
Yeah, I think it was about, yeah, 85 or 86.
And just to add to that, James, when we do a search and we place someone, we don't recruit that individual. Now, we can't prevent anyone from applying for a job.
Sure, sure.
But we don't, do not recruit an individual. And one of the messages we say to our candidates is long-term sustained leadership. We don't expect you to be there as long as I was in Fountain Valley at 18 years, but we certainly feel that five, six, seven years is something you want to give to a district. That's what they deserve.
And my last question has to do with, how many searches will you be doing in conjunction with our search?
I'm doing two other ones.
And I'm doing two others as well.
Super, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And Mr. Hills did come up with a question.
Yeah, Dr. Macheski and, and my colleague, Mr. Kelly, both asked a lot of the questions I wanted to ask, but didn't want to completely pass and let, you know, I listened very carefully and I was paying attention, so my lack of questions initially wasn't a matter of indifference. But I did think of one question I wanted to ask in addition to the really good questions that everybody else asked. You mentioned diversity and you mentioned gender and you mentioned race. And I was just wondering what we should expect in terms of diversity of candidates, in terms of educational philosophies and educational leadership philosophies. And I'm, I'm really asking a question, I don't have an agenda about it, but it just occurred to me that, you know, we went up to the California School Board Association thing and talked to a lot of different people. You know, you, you talk to people that are sort of the standard, I won't say cookie cutter, but there's a sort of a California School Board Association culture about what a school district is, what a superintendent is, what a board is. And that's good, that's good. I've read it all, I went through all the things and I understand it. But would there be any effort to have diversity in terms of, you know, I hear people talk about, well, you know, there's a younger generation of education leaders are coming up and they've got a lot of innovative ideas about how we could do things maybe differently than they traditionally. So I'm just kind of wondering, will we get some traditionalists and maybe get some people that are looking at new ways of thinking? How do you deal with diversity in terms of that?
That's a very good question. I think part of, it's going to be interesting to see because when we finish and we have a position description of what you're looking for, if, for example, innovation, creativity come out as a key factor, that's going to draw certain kinds of candidates. They're going to think, I have a chance to be more innovative than I, maybe I've been. And I have ideas for what that looks like. If you're looking for somebody, in different years, we've had years where, the year of, during the pandemic particularly, we had a lot of school districts hiring from within in our searches because they felt safer, right? It was a tumultuous time, it was a challenging time for everybody for all different kinds of reasons. So it really kind of depends on what you tell us, what you're going to get. If they think they're going to come in and they're not going to be able to do anything, and they're going to have to be only traditional, that's all you're going to get. So I think a lot's going to depend on what you and your community tell us you're really looking for, right? To see what it's, what are those things that are really important? I mean, your track record of success is pretty high, right? You've had stability of leadership for a while, you've had a lot of changes, you've had growth in your areas, good successes, that's important. Not every district can say that over the last five or six years, right? So I, I think people are going to feel like, wow, this is a district that's willing to try things, to willing to go forward and do different things. Even though, for example, I'm doing Irvine Unified, now, you know, just candid, I'm doing Irvine Unified. What Irvine Unified wants and what their type of, what's going to work for them is going to be different than you. And they're not far down the road, right? It's just different. And so that's part of what we'll be learning as we gather all the input that we gather from you.
The only thing I could add, Howard, is that in Tamalpais, the same question was asked. It was very similar. You know the area, you know the community there, and they were curious, will they get diverse candidates? Not only ethnically and gender-wise, but just in their, their thought process, their leadership thinking. And it was the same thing. It's difficult to tell most candidates. And what you want is, you want a candidate who their current district doesn't want to lose. That's who you want. You want strong. who their current district doesn't want to lose. That's who you want. You want strong individuals. They're going to be most interested in whether the board, and I'm sure they're watching your board meetings, all those, you know, when this is posted, you're going to have a lot of people on watching you. Is the board's ultimate priority, the general welfare of all students. If they feel that it is, then you're going to get traditionalists, you're going to get people with sort of different ways of doing things, you're going to get diverse candidates. But we've seen now, more than anything else, that the determining factor as to whether top-line candidates apply lies on your shoulders, more than almost anything else. And when we talk to candidates and we ask them, why did you not apply for that district? Usually the answer is, they didn't like what they saw for me. That's what they normally tell us. So I know it's hard to hear sometimes, but it is becoming more and more difficult to be a superintendent. I know that Kathy and Clint and Peggy and I were talking before this meeting, and everyone, we were asking ourselves--
Would we do it again?
Were you ready to jump in and do it again?
No.
We're too old, set in our ways, we're going to do it. But we are committed, all of us, to finding an individual who is going to further the both academic, cognitive, and effective progress of every child. That's what we're committed to. Okay, I don't want that answered.
Okay.
Can I ask you another question?
Okay.
One more.
Thank you. So a couple of good points have been brought up, and I want to try and tie them all together and see how this would be responded to. We are a new board, there are new board members.
Correct.
We have not yet had a governance meeting, and I think, if I may, it might require a couple. So as we're gathering this, as we're starting this process and putting in these questions, I'm anticipating that, I believe, some, I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure, because I've been attending meetings for quite a long time, many years, goals, missions, and things like that haven't been completely dug into for, really deeply. And we do have dropping enrollments. We have increasing funds. We have, but yet we have some of these kids still in the district. I mean, I think our data shows 500 kids that are not, you know, usually I think you have about 700 that aren't in your district because they go to private school, and we have about 1,200. So understanding and trying to kind of figure out a plan, or, you know, maybe a vision going forward of how we can capture that. I mean, there's no secret that state standards went down, you know, collectively as a state, right, post-COVID, to try and capture some of the, the learning loss. So is it the time, as we're going into a search, to float these possible ideas out there that we're hoping to achieve going forward in the future as we look for a candidate? Or is it to stay where we are, hoping to attract a candidate that's going to take us in a direction that perhaps the board is going to look at in the future? Does that make sense?
Yeah. I, I think, I think to some extent, you can, you can start doing that. I mean, I would wanting to be thinking about, I mean, for example, if we, if we have the opportunity to do your search, one of the first things is have a board meeting with you about, what do you want in a new superintendent? When you start sharing that, that's going to tell your community and your public what you're interested in. And you're starting to set the groundwork for what you value, what's important to you. Can you, I don't think you should do it all unless all of you agree to it, you know, that you have a, come together on that. Can't be just Howard's values or just, not that they're different, but you, it's got to be a collective from the board of what you want and what you value and what's important. As I said earlier, if you're, I think you said there's a governance workshop coming up. I don't know what the topic is or how it's, how it's, how it's going, or what, what you're, who's doing it or any of that. But it'd be certainly something I would want to talk to you about if I were doing that workshop right now, is where are, what are your, where are you want to head? What are the big, what's the vision? What do you want five years down the road for your community to say about this school district?
Exactly.
Right?
And it's important as well, and again, it'd be interesting if it comes up at a governance workshop, that differences and difference of opinion is a strength. The board, however, acts as a whole. So what people who might have a certain opinion are going to have to be willing to compromise and to be able to come together on something common and move in that direction first and foremost. But it shouldn't be one person's idea. The whole concept of listening, and I know it's tough in our political environment today, listening to understand, rather than what most of us do is listen to respond. And it's a skill set, but it's not something that is totally an issue you're dealing with. We're seeing it in many, many school districts.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
I really appreciate you coming and your time. Okay. Education Leadership Services, will you please come up?
Oh, that's awesome. Once again, thank you for having us. We're excited to be here and present to you this evening. Thank you, President Perry, members of the board. We thank you for having us. As Peggy mentioned, the others mentioned, probably the most important job a board can do is hire a superintendent. However, we believe even beyond that, they need to set the vision and the direction of the district. The true what of the district is what a board comes together. And a consensus board can really make great progress on items that maybe when people have diverse areas of thought, they can't make that same progress. So we see this process is twofold. One, finding you the right superintendent that would fit, as you mentioned, in a small school district. And then also determining the vision and strategic plan that you will need to move forward as a team, a team of six, the five board members and a quality superintendent. So we go out and look for candidates, and we're going to talk about where we get our team members. We have 19 people in our, our team that we started, and we chose those people for specific reasons. But let me tell you a little bit about myself first. My name is Clint Harwick. I recently retired from the superintendent of Huntington Beach Union High School District after 21 years as a superintendent. I did six other years on different chairs and negotiations. In fact, was hosting some of your members this morning, who came to our negotiation workshop, and it was great to see people from Laguna Beach. And also, it was in other areas of the educational system, including starting in CSEA, working through the teachers' union, and then becoming an administrator in all the chairs, including alternative ed. Because one of the things we've noticed is that you have a distinct, a model continuation school, and that is also something that needs attention that can be slightly different, as you talk about small school districts, but also small schools, and what you can provide students. Now, one of the things that we do as a team is, there's 19 members. We come from all different walks of life. And one of the reasons we brought this company together three years ago is many of us were in other search firms who had been through searches. And yes, Mr. Kelly, there are some of us that have been in searches where we were, we were in a pool of folks that were moved from district to district to find a home, right? And we found that that isn't the best way to do business, right? That the board should be able to see every single candidate. They should cast the widest net they could possibly do. And from that, the board makes a decision based on their vision and their strategic plan, if this is a partner that they can work with for many years to come. And so we came together and looked for members throughout California that would give us a geographical width and breadth, but also a knowledge base. For instance, we have the four team members that are going to be working with, on this search, Dave Cash, who's, works at USC, so he has the breadth of the university system. You have myself. Kathy Therosian will introduce herself in a minute. And Rob Bores was the superintendent of Glendora for 10 years, and he was also in seats in HR and also Student Services for 20 years before that. Now, we also, similar to leadership associates, have the use of everybody in our company. In fact, one of the things that's slightly different, and we can go to the next slide, is the reach that we have as well. As you can see, we have a number of associations that we are members to, and we even lead some of those associations. As far as AXS is concerned, we're members of that. In fact, two of our members are doing the new superintendent symposium. They're leading that, both another, a northern and a southern division, and helping lead new superintendents to work in their districts. And we're excited about that work. Like we mentioned, we came from other places, but came together with a common vision of, we would like to just help school districts. And many of us are recently retired. We are in Small School Districts Association. In fact, you asked the question, have we done any small searches? You talk about a small district and school. We just did San Inez. It's a high school superintendent-principalship. That was very unique in what, what the community wanted and what the board wanted, and putting a superintendent there that had all the needs of that small district. And one of the things that we found is they wanted somebody who was visible. In fact, the new superintendent we placed, people were shocked when they found out she went to everything. She went to the science labs, the football, not just the football games and basketball games, but she was also in classrooms, looking at instruction and being instructional leader. A school district of this size, having been in one at Rim of the World, similar size, the superintendent can be in classrooms weekly and be known by many students. They should know the name face story of all the employees and many of the students and the employees' kids and their families, because they, if they don't go here, they find out where they go and they learn about that as well. When you know somebody's name, and you know somebody's face, and you know their story, you're going to have a much different commitment to a school district than if it's just a job. And that's who you're looking for, I think, for a school district like Laguna Beach. Having worked in saddleback of 33 schools as your neighbor and been a partner with you on SELPA, and believe me, it's easy to vote when you have two people. And our SELPA, we had two people who voted all the time. So I got very aware of the different special education things that came up in Laguna Beach, and how you had to lean on a larger district to do those special ed items. Those are the kind of people that we're bringing together. I'm currently the suburban school superintendent's president. That is a nationwide organization. It's only 100 superintendents selected across the country. And so we have a reach across the country. In fact, just last week, we had some members from Chicago that wanted to meet and start talking about what that would look like if they came to California. And how could they leave a district of 2,500 kids? And are there districts in California like that? And I said, it's funny that you mention that. We might just have one that you would like to apply for. And as Peggy and Mark said, we all work together. So if we get this search or they get this search, the bottom line is, we will all work together to make sure that we get candidates that apply for jobs, especially here. So that way you get the right person, no matter who gets selected. We have that commitment to education. As you can see, we have other associations, California School Boards Association. And one of the unique things is we have a member in our company who is a sitting board member. And when we do the board interviews, we have her do the interviews with you, because we think it's important that as a board member, you can speak to another elected, and you might want to say things or ask questions that board, board member to board member could discuss, rather than maybe not just a board member and a superintendent, or former superintendent. Like I said, I'm retired, but I don't call it retired. I called it, I call it preferred. I'm in preferment. I get to do whatever I prefer, which is help districts find people, do workshops, sign negotiations, and when Mark's free, play golf with him in the rain. So we do those things to help other people. What's the ELS difference? Let's take a look at the next slide. Well, like we mentioned, we have a board member that'll do surveys. We have people up and down the state of California. We have a lot of Northern California supes that have connections in the Small School District Association. In fact, we just placed the executive director of the Small School District Association in his position. So that gives us some reach into small districts that would be able to find candidates that maybe wouldn't want, wouldn't apply or wouldn't know about the position. We have 582 years of collective experience. And even though we haven't done 70, 90 searches like some others, which is awesome, we can also tell you that our 19 members have all recently retired and have a network of people that have gone through COVID, Prop 28 monies and all the things that go on with that, the latest political strife that we've had and how they've managed those in districts. And we think that having 19 members that have recently retired in the last five years gives us a breadth of knowledge that will help you find candidates that would be quality for your district. And so we don't have as, as much experience in the searches area as we do in workshops, board workshops, and also finding talent. And I can tell you, our district is pretty good at finding talent. In fact, we have an eye for talent for Laguna Beach. In fact, Mike Conlon worked as a principal many years ago for this old guy named Clint Harwick. And he asked me about Laguna Beach, and I mentioned what a great school district it was and helped him get here. You also have a CTO that wanted to come over here. And Mike Morrison said, wouldn't it be fun to not have to wait to get consensus of 33 schools in a large behemoth school district if I could go over to Laguna and make change instantly? And he did. He came here, and I think you've seen him be an innovation leader in the area of technology. And so we can eye talent, we will find you talent, and we think it's important that we find you the right person. And we think we have the members to do that, and that's what our difference is. Our difference is that we will tailor your search just to Laguna Beach. We know what the district looks like, although we haven't lived in it either. So you're going to tell us what your vision is, what your strategic plan is. And to answer the question earlier, I believe you should start that work during this process. In fact, if you wanted to have board workshops, more than one, while this process is going on, that could really help a superintendent who's onboarding with some information that would be helpful of them become a part of this team of six. And so if you wanted to start that at the same time, either we can have CSBA, the current board member who, she's doing that as well. She could be doing the survey and the workshop at the same time. Those are the kind of things that are possible when you're nimble enough as a kind of a new company to be able to provide you with opportunities that maybe other folks wouldn't be able to provide. So that's, that's the ELS difference. And then we wanted to mention that we realize as a small school district, even though each school is very unique, there's a common thread that goes through Laguna. And one of the things that's very important is that the community members and others know their schools, they love their schools, and they love their school district. So getting their voice, and as Peggy mentioned, specifically the student voice, which I know that you are very cognizant of what your students think and feel and how important it is to them, that we get this right. And when I say we, if you choose us as a team, we're going to be on your team to the completion and also in the future as well. Because if you need other items, including support or coaching for the superintendent, we do that as part of the original fee. We just think it's to our advantage and to your advantage for us to either coach or support or help your new superintendent with you, provide a quality team that could leave this district to strategic planning that you've determined during this process. Kathy's going to take you through kind of the nuts and bolts of how we'd go about helping you select somebody.
Thanks, Clint. I am also a retired superintendent. I was a superintendent for eight years in the Monrovia Unified School District. And since retiring, I prefer to do things that are school-based. Prefer to do things that are good for kids. So I've continued my commitment to WASC. And as a commissioner-- and as a commissioner and have had the privilege of being the WASC representative to the Accreditation Commission for Community and Junior Colleges, ACCJC. So I'm very familiar with good work at Menlo Park as well. It is one of the things that we, and I know that Peggy and Mark do as well, is they want to do what's right for schools, what's right for students. And so let's go through the process. We begin with a planning meeting with the board. Now, this can be with the board in its entirety with a special session, or it can be with two board representatives. Depends on what this board decides. And that planning meeting goes through the process of identifying the calendar, finalizing those dates. We'll help you with compensation study, so to help identify the compensation package and finalize the survey. We deal with those details. That can be done with either two board representatives or with the board as a whole. We've seen it done both ways. It really is your choice. We also have individual meetings with each board member to gather your input about your next superintendent. And this is the part where we begin discussing what are some of the strengths of the district, what are our areas of growth, what is the expertise, the experience? What are those qualities that we need in our next superintendent? We worked in a district where they really needed somebody who understood the numbers because they were in trouble. And so somebody with some business office experience or as a former CBO was a preferred quality. So those are the kinds of things in those individual board member engagement sessions that you would be having with our colleague, who is a sitting board member. We'd have also group sessions as well as some individual sessions with cabinet members and then focus group sessions. And we'd identify with you which focus groups you'd like us to convene. Typically, it would be leadership of your employee unions, parent groups, community groups, community organizations, different agencies with whom you might partner, and absolutely students. Because their voice really is unique and they are your client. Just as you are ours, they are yours. We also have an online survey that is open to all stakeholders. We like to do that in conjunction with those focus group meetings as well as the larger community town hall meeting. You're going to see some commonalities. A process has some good pieces that run through. So we like to do those in conjunction so that word gets out about those surveys to get as much input as possible. One of the things that I did not mention, and I think we'd be remiss, is if we didn't right now mention that we have Teresa Henley, who is our secret weapon. She will help Victoria in identifying... You know, most school boards don't go through this process frequently. And that really is the goal, right? That also means that most executive assistants and administrative assistants don't have the practice. And so you look for the verbiage of what do we put in the board agenda to discuss X, Y, or Z? How do we post this in EdJoin? So our job is to try and lift as much of the responsibility off of your current staff because we know that they have a day job. And so we want to make sure to provide samples, recommendations, drafts that we would go through and provide with either Victoria or with the board representatives so that you can review it. The information that we receive from those individual and larger, small and large group meetings are triangulated, and we develop a superintendent leadership profile. That's the document that identifies the qualities, the characteristics, the experience, the expertise, the education that's preferred from all of your constituents. We like to give that to you and recommend that you publish it and that we show it to the candidates. Because if you're looking for somebody who is fluent in Armenian and I just came up with something that is unique to me, that's all, and nobody else is, then it would be fair for the candidates to be able to identify that quality, right? You just want to know, what am I getting myself into? We also provide the survey results in their entirety with as many random comments as you might imagine. We like to provide you with an executive summary of that so that we identify the common themes, the overarching ideas. But also, you'll receive every additional comment from those surveys. Think it's important to know. It's the voice of your community and it is interesting reading. In terms of our recruitment, we do have an extensive network throughout the state. And we will not only post and expect people to come, but we will start recruiting because we know of some really good people who might be a really great fit, depending upon whether their background matches your superintendent profile, right? That profile serves as a touchstone for the candidates that we bring forth. But through our higher education contacts, through our professional contacts, we look for a wide group and we start recruiting for you. And then we continue through some very thorough reference checking. So most candidates will provide three people, five people, people to call. And I guarantee they will all say positive things about them. We also, because of our network, are able to call a few other people, people who might not have made the list but might have worked with that person in some other capacity. And we are able to get some very candid remarks about what was it like to work with Dr. Harwick? Tell us more about that style. Tell us some additional information. Because going to a few more references really helps round out the person because we want to provide you with all the candidates and be able to provide you with some insights about some of them, about all of them, excuse me. So during the selection phase, we will bring you highly qualified candidates. You'll probably have, let's say, 30 applicants qualified coming to your search. Maybe, you know. What we'll do is bring you forth every candidate, identify some who stand out, and then identify maybe 10 who are extraordinary, who seem to be a perfect fit, who seem to match your leadership profile. And as a board, you'll look through each one of those. You'll have plenty of time to review those applications and identify those candidates who you would like to interview. We'll provide you with our insights and what those reference checks brought out, but it will be your choice because this is your superintendent. And it really is the most important hire, the only hire you have. The interview process, again, this is a process that you don't go through. This is your only hire. So we have come up with some worksheets that will help you through the interview process so that you don't confuse candidates. We structure it and we will help you go through the process as the interview continues. And we'll schedule them. We will provide you with a workshop prior to the interviews. And we'll make sure that it is a clean and comprehensive process. And we'll help you through the debriefing for you to find your best match. And as Clint mentioned, that we don't want to just bring you a superintendent, maybe seasoned, maybe not, and just leave them here. We want to make sure that we provide them with our resources and our experience. And so we will continue to mentor that new superintendent for a year. And, you know, we say a year, but we don't ever lose anybody's number. We'll continue to take calls and reach out because, again, this is a very small group and we like to make sure that our people are successful. So we have a proposed timeline. This is subject to change. It's reflected in the proposal we submitted, but again, those are things that we need to identify together and finalize. We have one fee, and our promise is to bring you the best candidate. We'll do that by communicating regularly, by providing information almost on a weekly basis. I don't... We have some experience giving board updates on a weekly basis. You'll probably be getting those so that you see where we are in the process every week. And we'd give those to Victoria to provide to all of you. And, you know, whether it's press releases or anything else, we'll make sure that you have the information and plenty of time to post and to distribute. And that's it. Thank you for the opportunity. Are there any questions?
Questions from board members?
So thank you. I appreciate the presentation. So I'm just going to ask some of the same questions and reiterate that we're in a difficult transitional moment. And you mentioned a couple of things that I think are worth coming back to around that. So the first thing is, are you the two people who would be doing the search?
All four of us.
The four of you.
Four of us would be the main search components, but also we have, as we mentioned, the board member named Heidi Dodd that would come and do the board interviews, one-on-ones, and as a group, with help from others. And if the board's prerogative, you could have her by yourself or one of us in the room as well. It's up to you. We want to make sure that the entire board feels comfortable sharing everything that's important to them. And if they feel like somebody in the room is filtering that, we want to make sure that it's taken off the table. And that's why having, I think, elected to elected is a good conversation.
And do you have a professional relationship, any of the four of you, to anybody on the board? Or have you spoken with anybody about the search up until this point? Great. So do you have... I know you're a newer firm. Do you have experience with another search where the district was sort of similarly struggling? And how did you deal with that? And the second part to that is, I was in particular struck by your comment about the board gets to decide about whether two people, the whole board... I'm not confident about our board making that kind of decision. So I'd like to know what kind of leadership you provide to the board when we're trying to figure out how to work together. We do have a governance meeting coming up. So what experience do you have with it? And how would you propose to work with the board in that context?
One of the things, by just asking that question, there's some concern about consensus building, right? And so one of the processes that you'll want to go through is a consensus building process. And anytime you're concerned about that, then you don't have the trust level established to have cohorts of board members do items. In fact, when we give you all the information, we give everybody all the information all the time. One board member or just the board president is not going to get a document, and we hope it gets shared with everything. Everything gets shared with Ms. Weber, and she will share it with every single person on the board in a timely fashion. Because time matters as well. You would want somebody to have results from a survey and somebody else get that like a day or two later. It's really important that you get all the information at the same time and the same amount. And like we mentioned, one of the things that we could look at is strategic planning and/or governance workshop where it brings the group together. Because quite frankly, the more you can have consensus, I think the easier it's going to be for you to pick someone that you all believe is going to work with you in your team of six to run the district as effectively as possible. That may not happen unless we do some board work in the middle of all the surveys. And that would be a big part of the process of what has been and what could be and all the things in between that you have to work through in order to make that happen. And because we've done a number of board workshops already, we would use some of those models to make that happen for you.
And in this case, we would be able to use some real-life examples of where we need to come to consensus. So structuring it to help the process continue in terms of the superintendent's search.
I think that's one of the strengths, as you mentioned, you know, one of the strengths that we have in our firm is that we've all been in districts fairly recently. And so we understand the political dynamics that have gone on in the last four or five years. And as successful superintendents in most of those districts, we have ways that we can bring boards together. So if it's not just the two of us, we can have others that, if you're interested in somebody who's worked in a small school district setting, we can have that person come in. The bottom line is, The bottom line is, functioning as a board together is really important before you even pick a superintendent. Because once they get on board, then you want them to maintain that teamwork in order to serve your students the best that you possibly can. And if you can't decide on what your philosophy is going to be, I'm not sure how we can help you find the right superintendent. Because you want that superintendent to fit the vision that you have for the district. Remember, you're the what, and then we're going to find you somebody that's going to implement the how for you.
Thank you.
I didn't bring my binder with me, so I don't have some of your data in front of me. Your success rate as far as the longevity of your placements? And how many of your placements are candidates that have come from outside of California?
Well, essentially, we have 100% rate. Because we've done like a half a dozen to eight searches, right? So all of them are in place. However, the folks that we have brought on from other search firms, they're also at 100% from the firms that they worked for before. So we have a pretty good track record as far as that goes in a limited amount of time. However, we think it's important that whatever superintendent is placed in your district, that we help them remain in the district as long as you want them here. We would not come back in another search and recruit somebody out of your district once we place them here. We would not do that. Because we think you've all worked very hard to get the right person, and this is a flagship district. It's a destination district. And so we think if we get the right person for you, they should stay here and work with you. And if it's a match, then they are going to stay here. And we won't re-recruit them for another position. Now, five years from now, seven years from now, different board, that's a different conversation. But I think it's really important, once you establish somebody, many times it takes three to five years to make effective change. Bullen would say seven. So in order to do some of those things, you need to have longevity, not just at the superintendent level, but also at the board level. And I think you're beginning that track. And that's the goal of the board.
Yeah, I think I meant longevity like five years or more, but I think you still kind of answered the question. So you used an interesting term that we're a flagship district. So what kind of, what kind of screening system do you apply to candidates to ensure that the candidates that we're getting are authentic to the needs of our district and not attracted to the fact that we're a flagship district? Certainly, there are reputations that precede our district as far as the environment, the salary structure, the families, the, just a lot of different things that are unique to this district that may, that some communities may not have, there are others that do. But how do you filter your candidates to ensure that their goals, when they're a creative candidate? Well, that could mean a lot of different things. So if I say I want to, creativity is really important to me, thinking outside the box, that's not a checkbox that really is kind of hidden under a salary desire.
Well, that's where those reference checks come in, right? When you call and ask for specificity about, tell me, you say the person is creative. Give me an example of that. How does that work? So those references of references help flesh out the candidate and substantiate whether or not those qualities are indeed authentic.
And also going back to our conversation of the what and how, we might follow up with, if the district was interested in innovation and technology, or the creative arts, the performing arts, or something of that nature, how has that person, one, implemented a program or programs that fit that? Because it's one thing to say you're very creative, it's another thing to say, how are we helping students become creative? So we want to, we want to know, what is the experience level? And like we mentioned, this is a flagship district. You're going to get people with experience in districts. They're going to want to come here and leave Laguna Beach with you. I mean, they're going to want to do that. So we'll need to make sure that, one, we don't filter them for you. We will look at some and suggest highly qualified, but like we mentioned, you're going to see every single candidate. Because it's important that you see all of them, because you might see some attributes in some people that you would say, that's not a great candidate for us, but I really like that attribute. Does anybody else have that attribute that would apply for us in this setting? And so you can glean a lot of information even from a candidate that maybe isn't qualified, maybe they haven't gone through the cherrys yet, maybe they're a director or they're assistant soup after like one year or something. That level of experience probably would rise to candidate for superintendent for here. But they might have some qualities that you say, those are really good qualities that we would like in our, our final candidate that we interview. So we would look through all of that. But we're really hesitant to use the term that we would filter anybody out, because we think it's important that you hear, you hear from every single person either on paper, and then we can decide as a group who you want to interview. Because sometimes it's that outlier candidate that, on paper, maybe, they didn't come across as a real go-getter, but then when you start doing interviews and background checks, you realize, wow, they're really innovative. And maybe they just didn't expound on that in their resume or things that they've done, you know? Folks that, many times, folks that don't care who gets the credit, they just care that it gets done, you have to tease out that they've had these successes so we can bring you the right person.
Am I on right now? Yeah. Yeah, I wanted to pursue somewhat the same line of questioning I did last time. I was trying to find on my phone the Ojai School District, because I don't know how big that is or how small that house might, how it might compare to San Ynez. Do you, do you know how big Ojai is?
It's pretty close. I actually have done the Ojai search. It's pretty similar, and it is a one-high school.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I thought. Yeah, no, it's interesting, because Board Member Kelly was talking about Menlo, and my daughter went to a little school right up there in the neighborhood named Stanford. And they had a saying up there that Stanford students are like ducks on the lake. They appear to be very placid and gliding along, but underneath water, they're furiously paddling away. And that's kind of the Stanford ethos, you know? And I was thinking about it, because, you know, there's this whole issue, and it's not just you or the other folks here tonight, but it's standard California School Board Association narrative is that, you know, there's these school boards that work together well, and everybody trusts each other, and there's a lot of cohesiveness, and everything seems to be, but I think it's a little bit like the ducks in, at Stanford. I think it can look like it's smooth, and there can be a lot going on underneath the surface. And it's interesting, because Board Member Kelly asked about whether you'd looked at the videos of our recent meetings. And we've had some very difficult meetings. And I was very, almost traumatized by the meetings, I got to tell you. But with a little bit of time, I've gotten a little bit different perspective on them. I think there's a lot that's been going on underneath the surface. There's been a lot of emphasis on everybody trusting everybody and everybody having the same message and all this, but there's a lot going on under the surface. And districts that have had the same leadership for a long period of time, there's a lot of, you've sort of developed this narrative that, you know, you better stay with the program and be part of it and not be asking a lot of questions, or you don't want to let what's going on under the surface come up above the surface. There's a question in here. And, you know, so what I wanted to ask you is, how often do boards, when you have a new board, how often are they also getting a new superintendent at the same time they're getting a new board? Because the comment has been made that we were having a difficult transition. So I've been thinking that when you have a new board and a new, and you're trying to get a new superintendent, that might be, you might call it difficult, but you also might call it that you're going to get, and you're going to bring some of the stuff that's beneath the surface up, and, and you're going to, that's when a governance workshop, and that's when working with a board to get it to understand its component parts really can become productive. So I would just like to ask you what you think about that, and if you have any comments on that.
Well, there's a kind of an old saying, the five board members that hire you are not typically the ones that let you go. But as you have turnover, folks have new ideas and teams change. And I think Peggy made the analogy about teams and how you get a new player. And one of the things that's interesting is people will take some time to find out what everybody's kind of role is on a team, because it can all be productive. To use my own analogy, you don't need nine catchers, okay? That wouldn't help a team. It just wouldn't. You need people with different points of view and different skill sets. They might have folks that they interact with in the city and/or the community, and those can all be points of communication that are very important. People that speak with you, Mr. Hills, might not be the same people that speak with President Perry. But if you bring those voices together, because you have a channel with them, together into a board meeting, that can be a powerful force to get good things done. And that's why I think we mentioned that this process that you're going through, as we could tell by some of the questions, although challenging, is a great time to begin your kind of vision board of what you see Laguna Beach being, not just today, but five years from now and 10 years from now collectively as a team. And if everybody came on board and said, we like it just the way it is, just leave it alone, right? Then you probably have the same five people sitting here unless somebody retired and went into performance.
So the last part of my question would be this. We've heard that, you know, people aren't going to want to apply here because there's been some bad board meetings. And yet, in fact, the videos of those board meetings have gotten a little bit of circulation around with some people in the superintendent community. I've been told by somebody, more than one person, who are long-term professionals in your field and other fields, in education fields, that, and I heard you say tonight, you think there's going to be a lot of people who are going to want to apply for this. So which is it? That because we had some bad meetings, nobody is going to want to be here? I'm hearing that people who have watched the video, including superintendents, say, that's a real opportunity for a superintendent to go in there and really work something, do some good work. So which is it? Or is it both?
I did watch the last board meeting. And I did see the challenging conversation. I also saw a few areas of where everybody did seem to agree. What I saw is five very passionate individuals committed to this community. And if that's the starting point, I can start from that. I do think that difficult conversations will occur. And I, I know that as if I were applying for this, and this, it would be a great opportunity, and I would be watching those videos and wondering, how would I address that? Because that, by the way, might be a great interview question. So those are the kinds of things. There will be areas, and I don't think it's going to detract from the number of people who apply. I do think it will caution some people, especially some people who maybe don't feel confident in, in bringing together teams. Because I don't like, I didn't enjoy having five board members who just always agreed with me. I enjoyed five board members who challenged me, because I made better decisions. And I had to look at problems from multiple perspectives before getting to the best decision. And sometimes that wasn't my initial one. So hearing board members and making sure that those voices are heard is really important for your next superintendent. And those board meetings, I also recall the previous board meeting referenced, and I did not go back to that. But it's information that helps us move forward.
And unless somebody, unless the superintendent retires from a district, the reason people leave is because they don't want to take on that challenge anymore, whatever that challenge may be, for a lot of reasons. Whether it be political, or financial, or a combination of both, declining enrollment, you know, different things that go on. And actually, I think what you'll find is, when people see board meetings that can be challenging, or the way folks interact, if they can look and say that the people at the board table can be committed to being hard on issues and soft on people, then you can gain a lot of ground. And so I think what you're going to have is you're going to attract people that say, that is a flagship district, and yes, maybe there's some consensus challenges, but actually, those challenges sometimes are more fun to tackle than a $30 million budget hole. That you show up and you're saying, what do we do now? You're in the middle of layoffs and other things that, quite frankly, you might not have any control over. We're helping six people get along, along with the support of a cabinet and outstanding support, which I know that you have in this district. That's a challenge I think people are going to want to take on. Because in the end, what are they going to get? Well, you mentioned what they're going to get, right? They get to live in a great place, they get to have the finances to put in place things that are important, like I mentioned with Mike Morrison. He knew he was going to be able to come here and do things for kids that maybe would take longer in a 33-school school district or a 50,000-student school district. He knew if he came here, he could help make quality technological change, right? And I remember he came during challenges at times. But we talked about, what is the basic foundation of Laguna Beach? Great foundation. And so people are going to want to be there. So to your point, Mr. Hills, I think people are going to want to apply. And you're going to get some really good candidates. Your biggest issue is, you're going to have to figure out between the very good candidates you get to choose from, how do you narrow it down on one, and then feel like you got the right person, right? Because you have to make a definitive decision, and sometimes that's difficult.
Great question so far. I had a question about references, like when you, of course, somebody's going to, whoever they put down for references are going to give glowing. Other people, though, don't you often just have to say, yes, they worked here from this time to this time, and not give more information?
That is information.
Okay.
Having been in HR for a number of years, that is information. And going back to what we were talking about earlier, I think that's what we found on one of the other searches, is really getting to the next few tiers really tells us about folks. And quite frankly, it might not be something that knocks somebody out, but might, might be something that makes somebody attractive to you.
It's positive.
Like, they might say, this is a person who was a change agent, and they wanted to improve instruction this certain way. And so they started banging heads with people in the district that wanted to do it differently. Well, if you like the other 90% of their attributes, and you're like, and I like that one too, you know, that's something that might fit. But we want to be able to tell you that, so as a board, you can decide if that's what you want to take on.
Do you, do you ever contact current board members?
Oh, so that one is tricky, right? If it's a sitting superintendent, only the board member that has been identified by the sitting superintendent. Because we really believe that confidentiality of this process is integral to its success. There will be sitting superintendents who do not apply if this is not a guaranteed
Very confidential.
Confidential process. And imagine, as a superintendent, if I don't, if I am not selected, I still want that confidentiality to continue in perpetuity.
I understand. Yes, thank you. Want to finish up?
I really like your offer to do the board workshops. I think that's something unique and something that we could benefit a lot from. I like the two mics that you referred to us. I must say, they have been doing excellent jobs for us. My concern is, how many, how many searches would you be doing, or are you doing at the same time as ours?
Well, we would be just doing this, so we can focus our whole Southern California division, because we have people all up and down the state, would focus on just this search. We do have some folks doing searches up north. We have some teams doing that in small districts. But we would focus our attention on this.
My big concern is your cost. I don't know how you survive.
You've got to pay taxes.
And how long you're going to be around. I mean, I'm used to universities, and, you know, it's like a percentage of the salary of the position, and they're in hundreds of thousands of dollars for the, you know, the search firms make. So this is a whole new world for me, that you can do it for $25,000, you know? And, but being small and new, I just wonder, how long are you going to last?
Oh, we'll last.
Okay. And can I, as far as delving into that?
Yeah. So obviously, as a newer company, we're also going to try and underbid so that we get more of the market share. However, we're also in it to make sure that we do things right, and we believe that we will. We believe that our process, our commitment, will get you the right match, and we're committed to doing that. We're all retired. We're not trying to make our next salary through Laguna Beach as basic aid district. We're trying to be fair and competitive in our process. And to increase or decrease based upon the revenue of a district doesn't seem ethical.
Your bid is lower than the other companies.
Right.
Okay, that's nice.
Now, we get it.
Okay. But not much.
Again, it's competitive.
Yeah, oh, yeah. This is all new to me. Thank you.
If it was tips, it'd be tax-free.
Thankfully, we don't need to work for tips.
I think it goes back to what we, when we started our conversation, what makes us different. And that was, we brought folks together, we had a philosophy that all of us have been helping education for all our number of years, 580. for all our number of years, 582 years, we wanted to continue to do that. And so there are times, even some small districts, what we've done is, we've done coaching with folks, we've done workshop with folks, and we work with them so they can afford that. Because we think it's important that all the students throughout California have access to folks that can give staff development to administrators, to board members, and others. Because collectively, if education ends up doing better than the day we started, then we're better off. Because isn't that why we got in the business anyway? I mean, superintendents are CEOs of huge companies, right? But really, when you think about all the people that work in it, and the folks they manage, if they worked for a big company, their salary would be much different, right? But they got into the business of helping students. And so the folks that we recruit to work alongside of us and our company have maintained the same philosophy. We don't need the dollars and cents for our livelihood. We want to make something so that way it's worth our time. But we think it's a way of giving back. Because wouldn't it be a shame to have 582 years of experience, just walk out the door, and nobody benefits from that? We think it's important that people benefit from those things, including our board member, our CBO, our HR folks. Because one of the things we do as well is, we help people connect other positions as well. We find interims for folks. We don't get anything for them. But if somebody says, our HR director just left, we don't know what to do, CBO, we will help them find one and get it in there so we can help them. Don't make any money on that. But what we do make is the gratitude of knowing we helped a district that might be financially in trouble, we didn't help them find a CBO. That's what we get out of it. Because we've been blessed by being in the education sphere all our years. And so we think it's a great opportunity for us to give back. And like Mark said, but we don't have to work 14 hours a day to do it. And we don't have to worry about what happens in certain things, like you do when you're sitting in a chair every single day.
We don't provide housing. We don't provide relocation expenses, which I find bizarre. But that's, I don't know if that's standard in other school districts, as far as, or not. We've had one of the highest-paid superintendents for one of the smallest districts, and a number of board members have always raised challenges about that. I'm wondering, what salary would you recommend? Or how would, you know, for getting, we find someone, how do we entice them to come here?
We would help with developing kind of some comparable salaries in the area, as well as looking at the last one. So, you know, all of this is public knowledge, and we'd have, we'd start going through and providing a range for you. And what else you decide to put in there to make it as an attractive offer is something else. We provide a range before we went to print in edcal, or a joint, or whenever we were, because I would want to know, am I taking a, I'm not going to take a salary cut coming here. Or going to any other district. My application, if I am applying to be a superintendent somewhere, it won't be for a salary cut. So you want to make sure that you're competitive. And you will be. You know, people are still asking me if it was a nice, easy drive from Glendale to Monrovia, because I was the assistant superintendent of Glendale before working in Monrovia. And I never lived in Glendale. My job meant that I was there a lot. And people just assumed I lived there. Your next superintendent may not be a resident of Laguna Beach, but nobody will know the difference. Because it seems important to this board and to this community that the next superintendent is visible and accessible. So they may not know the difference.
Thank you so much. Mrs. Throsian, is that kind of right?
Yes. Yes.
I have many Armenian people in my hometown. And friends, and Mr. Harvick. Wonderful job. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt. I admit it late to the meetings. Is there still an opportunity to do public comment?
You can do it before or during the item, as long as you haven't made a motion to vote. So it's up to you.
I really appreciate that.
Do we need to make a motion?
No. Don't.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Good evening, board members, search firms, and community members. My name is Shaheen Sheikh-Saddal, and I'm here tonight as a dedicated parent, longtime PTA leader and advocate for our students. As we begin the search for a new superintendent, I want to speak directly to the search firms who are here tonight, and to potential candidates watching. This district has a history of excellence, built through years of thoughtful leadership, dedicated educators, and a community deeply invested in student success. As we navigate this transition, we urge the search firms to uphold best practices and ensure a process that is transparent, professional, and student-centered. We are looking for a superintendent who will embrace and advance the mission of this district to ensure that each student gains the knowledge, experience, world perspectives, and skills needed to become a lifelong learner and producer in a competitive and interconnected world. To potential candidates, know that you will be stepping into a district with engaged, passionate, and supportive families who believe in this vision, in our vision, in our district's vision. We take ownership of each child's learning in our schools, accepting no limits on potential. Parents and community members have come together to form Families Unified for Education in Laguna, a 501(c)(4) dedicated to ensuring that this process and the leadership that emerges from it keep students at the center of every decision. We see ourselves as, not as adversaries, but as partners in this work, ready to support the next superintendent in building on the district's strengths and ensuring that our schools continue to thrive. The students of this district deserve greatness. They deserve a leader who believes in their limitless potential and will champion their success. We are committed to working alongside the board, the search firms, and the future superintendent to make sure that this happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, we have a tough job here. We have two really impressive groups. I think they would both do a fabulous job. Board members, what are your comments? What are you thinking? Anybody want to weigh in?
Do you want us to stay for your deliberations? Some of our search firms just believe.
Yeah. Probably. Huh? What do you want? Oh, okay. I think people are more comfortable with you leaving, but I'm not going to insist.
Is there some place for them to go?
Thank you.
Victoria, you can just call them to us.
Yeah, we can.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Truly, that was very insightful. I know for me, I really appreciate all that you all said. I think you mimic a lot of what's going on in my mind, that this is a really great opportunity for us to look ahead. So I'm really excited about the process. Thank you.
Thank you. So.
How do you want to proceed?
Do you want to go over basically where you're leaning? Do you want to look at the roses or the thorns? How do you want to do this? It's not just up to me.
I could make a motion on one.
I mean, with all respect, once you, if you immediately make a motion on one without discussion on the pros and the cons, it doesn't allow for an open mind to go in to see if somebody's perspective might open your eyes to something that maybe you hadn't thought of. So it might be nice for each to kind of just outline what they liked about both, what was a concern about both. And then after that, we can go, and then maybe start again of which you liked, and then take a vote. What do you think of that idea?
I just don't want to be here all night.
I would, I would think we can be sensitive to your social schedule, as full as I know it is.
A 30 minutes of discussion, and then moving on to the business, I'm willing to support that.
I like that.
I can respect that. But I think, again, rather than have it be specifically about a time, I'm trying to bring the thoughtful process back to the table as well. Is that fair?
I don't know what that means.
A thoughtful process?
Can you start?
Would you like to start, pros and cons on each?
Yeah, I'm trying to find someone to pick up my son. I'm texting, and I don't want you to think I'm trying to, you know, have conversations with people in the room. So, yeah, if someone else can start, I am listening. But I need to find someone to go to the high school and get my kid.
Mr. Hills, would you start?
I guess the question I have in my mind is, the new company, the young company, that's the startup or the start, you know, just do, I found a lot of what they said to be very interesting to me. I guess my question would be, do they have capacity problems? Do they have, do they have the depth? And do they have the means to deliver? I think they have huge potential. I'm wondering if they have the ability to deliver. And I agree, the whole time I was thinking, how can you do any of this for 25? I think they, I think we have to give them more money if we hire them. But anyway, my question is, what people think about whether they have the ability to deliver?
Anybody want to comment on that? They said they had 19 members, which is quite a few. And they were going to use four people to work on the search for us compared to the two of the other firm. Although they could call on more people if they needed, and they do have a more depth. I liked that they had a board member and that perspective. I liked that many of their, many of their people had just, within the last five years, retired. So they have a network of new people. Not that the other group doesn't either. I don't know, because they didn't get into that. Both of them, I really liked that they have, are going to keep us informed of everything, whether they're, we get to see everything, and then they'll give us recommendations. They both seemed comfortable talking with students and all kinds of stakeholder groups. They both were doing surveys online. There were a lot of similarities.
I think, for me, I think there's, so a concern, so maybe I start with the thorn, is that did the second presentation have the advantage of tapping into our questions from the first in their presentation? Because I think the approaches are going to be a little different, maybe, from the different firms. The outcome is, the ultimate outcome is the same. They both offer mentorships and guidance, and training, and workshops, if I understand correctly. I think the new firm is new, but it's created from a group that all has a lot of longevity that they're bringing to the table. It's not that they're all new at a search. So I don't know if that's the, you know, I don't think it's the same concern as far as, you know, their history and their experience. So I'm, so I guess my concern is that, did we get the right input from Leadership Associates? The first one, is it Leadership Associates? Because we didn't, because the questions that we asked allowed the second firm to give a more thoughtful presentation on what they gained from our questions. Does that make sense? I'm curious as to, I think the question about, did anybody know any of us is a fair and valid question that I know both of you asked. But it, and it seems that both groups know people in our staff. And so I think to what level do each team know our staff, I think is curious. I think, if I understood correctly, Leadership Associates has placed people here and has worked with our staff, but the other group has specifically placed our executive team. Is that correct?
I think the, what I heard was that the individuals talked with him about going to Laguna Beach, and the recommendation was, it's a great place to work. I don't think they had anything to do with placing Mike and Mike here.
That's correct, yeah. It was just, Clint was just the superintendent when both myself and Mike Morrison worked in Saddleback. So we just went to him and said, this is an interest of ours, and a career change, and get him some, got some counsel from him. But then ultimately, yes, it was, he was not involved in any way, shape, or form with the decision-making in Laguna Beach.
See, I was on your hiring panel, so I don't remember. I didn't remember a firm, but I guess there was a firm.
No, there's no firm.
No, no, because what's her, Lisa Winston ran that.
Yeah, there's, there was, typically, the only time you use a firm is for superintendent placement. You don't use a firm for
Okay, so he was a superintendent. Okay, I couldn't quite figure out what that kind of
He was a superintendent in Saddleback Valley.
Okay, I missed that. Okay.
So I have a few thoughts about it. I actually would be fine with both of these firms. I thought both of them did a good presentation. I also have no doubt that we will get excellent candidates. Mr. Hill brought that up. That is not a concern of mine. I do think that this will be a very difficult search. As much as we all want what's best for the kids, it's been a number of difficult meetings. And I just think it's important to own that and think about how to move forward in a way that is constructive. And that's really what I'm interested in doing. But I think that we're going to need help doing that. And so for that reason, while I liked both of them a lot, I did feel like Leadership Associates had more experience working with many different kinds of districts who may be experiencing, you know, all different kinds of board structures and all different kinds of complicated things in the community. The other, I mean, I could be argued against that, but that was one of my responses to it. I do think the other group was, has a lot of like one-on-one, you know, much more one-on-one work, and would figure that out. But just doesn't have the same amount of background in terms of dealing with that. So that's one of my responses that I would share.
No, I'd probably have to agree. I think that having the broader expanse to draw from could help bring a perspective that I think would be helpful for us. What I appreciated from both groups was, I think for me, the confirmation that different voices bring a great board together. And I won't get the quote right, but, you know, there's a lot to be said in, you know, it takes a lot to make change. And we are in the middle of a massive change for this community. We've had a board leadership that's been here for 30-some-odd years, and superintendent for eight. So it, I see this as what can be a very positive opportunity for us. And I'm really excited to embrace it, and embrace it wholeheartedly with different, whatever we need to do for governance, whatever we need to do to bring consultants in to help guide to help guide us as a board, to come together, to bring forward the best candidates. And, and in that, with the changes in our community as well, possibly the beginnings of the future of our district and what our community and our parents and our, and the board and, and with the community's blessing for, for our schools. And I think it's a really, really exciting time. And would love to see a group that comes in to help us embrace that and find that consensus amongst us and, and go forward with that. Because I think this is, I think this can be a very exciting time. And we do have a lot of opportunity here in Laguna that we are blessed with. And I think it's important to recognize that as a community, we work hard to be here, to be able to create that opportunity for our own kids, but also for the kids in the community for those that don't have kids. They work hard to be here to, to help fund that as well. And I think everyone wants the best thing for our kids. So I think it's really an exciting opportunity. And I really look forward to this process. And I think it's going to be a good thing for us. So, I do agree with you on the broader experience or perspective to help guide a diverse perspective here.
I, I agree with Joan. I think we need some help with, with the board and, and setting our, setting our vision and our direction to go. So we can set clear guidelines for what we want as superintendent and who. I think that's really important.
Yeah, thank you. I don't know what I'd do without you. Yeah, so, yeah, you know, it's, it's, which one of them was the first one to say? I think it was the first one that, you know, once we get started here, it would be good for you guys to have a governance workshop. Was it the first one that said that? Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you know, it's interesting, because it obviously has been difficult, but I, I, I don't think, and I agree that there could be difficulties, but I'm actually optimistic. And I think if we have a couple of good governance workshops and, and people have a little bit more sense of what's motivating each other and whatnot, I think that we actually, you know, might surprise ourselves, you know? And I think either of these firms would be good. I really liked the fact that the second firm did not buy into the idea that, because we have a difficult transition, we have a difficult transition because, well, we had a difficult transition, but I, I like the fact that they didn't buy into the idea that, you know, we're not going to get people applying because they don't like what's going on in the school district. I actually think it's just the opposite. I think we're going to, and, and they, I think they all would agree. I, I agree with you, Sheri, that the first group kind of was at a disadvantage because they were up first, and they, and the second group got the benefit of a lot of back and forth. And they, I think they had better spin on particularly that subject. But I think they both, I think they both, in the end, and when the one, the second group was up here and they were saying, actually, you're going to get a lot of good applications, and, you know, the idea that people are going to get scared away is, is really not very compelling. You could see the other, the other lady in the background nodding her head, agreeing with that, you know? So I don't think, I think in the end, we're in a dilemma because we've got two really good candidates, you know?
I move that we offer, we ask the staff to get a contract going for Leadership Associates to run our search. Oh. The speakers are awful. I, I'm, my recommendation, my, my motion is to ask the staff to do a contract with Leadership Associates. That was the first group, if I've gotten it right, which is a larger group of people that I feel will be around in five years to do this search. Sorry.
You said 30 minutes.
Yes.
It's only been 15.
Well, but it's, it seems to me...
We don't need to talk for nobody. I mean, I know you love the work, but we do have to come back tomorrow night.
So is there a second?
You can still second it.
Okay, yeah, I'll second that motion.
Okay. Yes, yes. Is there further discussion? Further questions? Everybody feel like they have their say?
I did like the question, I did like the statement, though, that they said that I would encourage all candidates to watch all of our board meetings. And one of our questions should be, how would you handle the situation?
She, she wants candidates to watch the board meetings and ask how they would handle the situation.
Trust me, anybody who's interested has watched the board meetings.
And I'm happy to hear people say that, everybody I hear is saying, we're going to get great candidates. So I'm very confident. I mean, people like a challenge.
Happy to work in this school district. The fact is, is that we have a very difficult board. And that will not make people happy. And it will be very difficult, which requires us to find a very strong superintendent. And the question is, which of these two firms are best in a position to guide us toward the, the end product of getting a very strong superintendent who can work with a board that is struggling? I'm not concerned about getting a, a big pool. I'm concerned about getting to a point that we can pick the best person from the pool.
Yeah, I'd just like to respond to that by saying that, yeah, it has been difficult. And so we talk about how you deal with difficulty and how you avoid difficulty and how you have a stable situation. And that's by having a superintendent. And one of the reasons it's been difficult is because we don't have a superintendent that is, that has been appointed as a permanent superintendent. And so, we went through a difficult passage. And not only was there not a superintendent, there wasn't anybody in charge. So that made it very difficult. And now we have an opportunity to solve that problem by bringing in a permanent superintendent that's going to provide that leadership.
So I think we have two on the floor. I will say that I wouldn't call it difficult. I would call it passionate. I changed the word passionate. We're passionate. Trying to find the positive.
No, I'm, I'm not trying to be negative. I think it's important to recognize that we have fundamentally different conceptions of how a board operates. Our conception of the last, I don't even understand what it means to say we've had 37 years of a board we're getting rid of. I got here two years ago. So like, I don't want to go there. I'm just saying, I don't want to go there. I'm just saying that the issue isn't, you know, we have Jeff who's doing everything that he needs to do to keep the district going, and it's created stability for the staff. And we're in a very good place. The difficulty is, is that the board members do not agree about what it means to have a vision for the future. And that is a sort of longer-term thing. And it's not about passionate. It's not about strong personalities. It's about thinking about, we don't even agree on what the role is on the school board. I think we're getting there. I'm not trying to be negative. I'm just saying that that is built into this process, those differences. And so we need to proceed in a way that addresses those differences. And that's where my recommendation came from.
Did you want to say something else?
Yeah, I just want to say, that's why we're going to have a governance workshop.
Can we, are people ready to vote now?
I'm ready.
Okay, all in favor? This isn't roll call, is it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote for Leadership Associates. Our next board, meeting adjourned. And next meeting is tomorrow night. Oh, yeah, let's vote on adjourning, sorry.
Meeting is at 4:30.
Yeah, meeting at 4:30. All in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?